And then end us with the Gentleman of the Tour 2013, which will be headlining Mumford &amp; Sons. Cody, take us away for 2013 special events.
Good evening, everyone. Just wanted to talk to you about kind of the special event lineup that we have coming to Guthrie that the city does have involvement with. And some of these are, we'll start off with the Integrity Run, and that is a tough choices mud run. That's to kind of help promote the ability to make the right choices for youth in high school and junior high kind of ages and everything like that. And that is going to be kind of led through our own Officer Gibbs with the Police Department, but like I said, the city will be involved with that. It's a, you know, kind of a tough mud or almost type thing, kind of catchy 5K event that is coming to Guthrie. Next, the city of Guthrie is going to be hosting a movie in conjunction with a dinner and a movie night with 89er Parade. We are not going to be hosting the dinner. We are going to be hosting the movie after the dinner. And so we are getting involved with 89er Day, 89er Parade in efforts to build it into something really spectacular, a great tourism event, bring in all kinds of people from around the state. And so that's kind of the city's involvement with that. With the triathlon, we had that last year as our first year. This is our second year to do this, and we have city staff working with the Chamber on the first Capitol Triathlon. Moving on to the Gentleman of the Road Concert Tour with the headline band Mumford &amp; Sons. They will be coming to Guthrie. It's going to be September 6th and 7th next year. The economic impact of this is going...
This year?
Yes. Did I say next year?
It's all right. We don't, man. 2013.
Yeah.
You're young. It's okay.
September 6th and 7th of 2013.
Cody?
I don't think you realize that anyone told you this, but the money that's raised from the American Legion Auction at that dinner where they're going to have the movie afterwards, the auction is one of the most important events there. And anybody that you can raise to bring an auction item for the auction, there's where we make a big lot of our money, besides the circus that comes into town, to do the 89ers. It pays for the windows, it pays for the parade. It's very important that you guys understand that the more people we can get to donate nice items for that auction, I'm not talking about the silent auction, I'm talking about the live auction that Dennis Oaks does. That's what really makes 89ers, and that's where the money is generated from. And you can help us on that end getting those items.
Absolutely.
Because I had to do it for two years, and before that, Dr. Teresa Williams did it for 10 years. And that's one of the hardest jobs you'll ever have.
And we're excited to help out.
And that's what keeps 89ers going, but to grow it bigger, that's the thing you really need to take a good look at.
Yeah, that's what we're excited to help out with and have the city be involved with. And so thank you for that, for remembering reminding everyone of that. Back to the Gentleman of the Road Tour, the economic impact of this in a city that we can really relate to, and that is Bristol, Virginia slash Tennessee, the downtown is split, is huge. Last year during the Gentleman of the Road Weekend when they hosted, typically we do very similar sales tax numbers per weekend. You know, an average weekend for us would be, or an average month, I apologize, is going to be around a certain mark. We hit that with Bristol, pretty close to that, we're a couple hundred thousand, or a couple thousand dollars short typically. We are going to see an economic impact really boom to where the city's going to be greatly impacted, not only just in sales tax, but also City Hall really gaining in revenues from donation of ticket sales that the band typically does and different aspects of the Gentleman of the Road Tour that will be hitting this town. And so with that, those are kind of our special events. And so if, John?
I was going to ask you, this is the, Mumford Sons are the headliner, so are we going to have other bands leading into Mumford &amp; Sons?
Yes, we will.
Explain what else we're going to have, or do we know?
Yeah, absolutely. We're excited to host also the Alabama Shakes, Edward Sharp and the Magnetic Zeros, the Bears Den, and Vaccines as a part of the group helping out Mumford &amp; Sons. And so...
Well, it's a two-day event, so Mumford &amp; Sons only going to play one day, or they're going to play both times?
Saturday.
Saturday.
And so we're very excited. You see the sales tax chart that's going around. You'll go to the December numbers actually, because we're looking at, I'm sorry, you'll look at November's numbers, I apologize, because we're looking at September's and Oklahoma Tax Commission reports two months behind schedule. And so look at November's numbers, you see what we typically do, we accept, we expect, I apologize, for our numbers to just go through the roof with this tour that's coming into town. It's going to be great for sales tax and a lot of different other revenues for the city. So...
So there's not the weekend to have the sales tax holiday?
Holiday.
Thank you very much. Sales tax holiday. Good point, no.
And what Cody's done, John, those are, those are great questions. What Cody and Renee are going to work on over the next six months is the community involvement side of that. A lot of businesses are already asking our phones, have been ringing, how can they be involved, how can, how can that help their businesses? So we're going to have, similar to what you saw with the Centennial, a committee that's going to meet that will talk about vendors, marketing, volunteer, volunteer recruitment and management thereof. So all of those pieces will start February 15th at 1:00. The city is going to host a focus group for it, and then start, start delegating and assigning committees. This will be a huge event for the city of Guthrie. There are only three cities in the United States that are hosting this tour. So we are chosen out of one of three in the United States. If you have not looked at any of your social media outlets yet, it is, it hit Dallas Observer within minutes. It hit, it is, it is blowing up across the nation about us hosting this. This is something absolutely spectacular. Very, very exciting. All right, third, we have Kay Wade with Loken County Economic Development Council. She's providing her quarterly update, is that right?
Yeah.
And so you should have received in your packet a two-page document. We told her she only had five minutes, so I hope that you took a look at it. Thank you, Kay, for presenting. I'm so bad.
Her hearing's getting so bad, the look came over her face immediately.
If she goes up, well, we have installed a trapdoor at the bottom. So we'll keep you on schedule, but it looks like we're tracking just fine. So Kay Wade.
Okay. Well, I'm glad to be here and glad to see all of you. I just want you to know that our public-private partnership with the city of Guthrie, it is unique and it works so well with both recruiting prospects to town and supporting the growth and expansion of our existing businesses, because we definitely have some good, wonderful, existing, stable employers out there. Been working with Cody on several projects downtown. We have projects that need loan financing, and so we're always, you know, welcoming those and glad to see, there, there are like three or four right now who are wanting to do expansions or renovations right downtown. So that's, that's a good thing. So it's a pleasure to work with the city on those. We met with a developer regarding a site for a new commercial location. He needed about four to five acres, and followed that up by procuring a survey of the potential site for development of the property and continuing to follow up with that. Met with Hawkins Incorporated, which is a large water treatment chemical company located in Minneapolis, their headquarters are, but they cover the, all of the Midwest and, or the central U.S. really. They do not have a distribution facility in Oklahoma, and they are looking at Guthrie, they're looking at the Budweiser building, they're excited about it. I mean, it is, it is a distribution building, and so they're excited about it. They are, you know, it's a huge company, so they're, you know, working it through their process of decision-making. But I will tell you that Jim Hankey with the city, who is Renee's counterpart, or not counterpart, but he works with Renee, he happened to be in the office when this gentleman came in, and the gentleman had questions about permitting the city's reception for water treatment chemicals and the storage and distribution and all. And Jim's background was just perfect, because he was in that business and he understood exactly what the company did, was familiar with the company. So that, you know, I just, I just think that Renee and her group do a wonderful job with Well, I said before, working with Cody on financing several business expansions and renovations in downtown Guthrie. The next one is the revolving loan program. We didn't finally finalize. I hope all of you have been out to see the new crosstown vet building that was blown away in 2011. It took a whole year to get that done. We were able to help them with interim financing, and now we have the permanent financing in place for them. But it, it, it's a wonderful, wonderful place, and they worked through the hottest summer known to man outside, basically, but they kept it up. We made three new loans over the past three months, so local companies for business expansions. We're currently working with five local companies on loan applications for expansion during this year. We have 26 outstanding loans totaling over 2.1 million, and they're all active and in good standing. And they're all for expansions and additional land, equipment, and fixtures and working capital, and one was for a business purchase. And these companies always create jobs. They always create jobs, because if they buy a new piece of equipment, they have to add people who can monitor that. One minute left.
High points.
Anyway, since '94, when we got our first loan, we've dispersed, dispersed over five, almost five and a half million dollars to 65 businesses in the area who have created jobs. Let me skip down since Rhonda, I mean, Wanda is, is getting antsy here. I'm going to go to the rodeo arena. The rodeo arena has been, as most of you know, the Blount Memorial Foundation did default on its loan to the LCEDC, so that put the EDC in a place of being the leaseholder from the city of Guthrie, the rodeo arena, which we certainly never intended that happening. But at any rate, there is a lot of interest in it now. We have sent bid packets out. We are getting bid packets back in for the 89er rodeo, which is imminent. And they're, they're, anyway, we will be reviewing those in Friday and let you know who's going to be at rodeo. But that arena is an asset for this community, and it can't be replaced for less than $200, $250,000, so, but it has to be maintained and managed and promoted. We have people that are interested in doing that. I'll tell you about that next time. I will say this, on a business recruiting trip to Dallas by the Oklahoma City Partnership, they had managed, and I went because it was a cheap trip to go on, because we drove down and back, but met with developers, and I was mainly talking about recruiting durable goods retailers, retailers. Well, they took a look at our demographics and they said, you really got a problem. You're going to have to get a broader market area. Well, we already consider a broader market area, certainly. The, our population is around 10,000. The county's population is 41,000. There are 18,000 homes in Logan County, there are 4,400 in Guthrie. That's not enough for durable goods retailers. And I can assure you, they look at the house tops, they look at the households, because those are the people that are here, that live here all the time, that buy the $1,000 refrigerator, or the $600 stove, or the washer dryer and all. So they definitely said, you need to use the county demographics and the market area demographics. And Trey, I was glad to hear you include the county when you talked about the Mumford Sons today, because it definitely is. I mean, it's, we got to talk about the region. It's Guthrie and the region. And I can tell you that nobody else in Logan County has any durable goods retailer either. So they'd be here. And they said, we need to concentrate on the I-35 corridor development, because that's easy access and a lot of folks scramble on that. I brought, if anybody is interested in our annual audit, I brought it.
Kay, can I ask you a quick question?
Sure.
If we were able to come up with more water for Guthrie, do you think the large, large companies would come into southern Logan County if we could provide water there for them? The big companies, the big ones, not the five and dime, but the really big, big ones?
I think, I think without it, you'll never get any one like that. I mean, you have to have...
That's what I thought. I think if we're going to really grow southern Logan County, or Guthrie for that matter...
Even residential.
We've got to come up with more water. And I think it needs to be said, and I think we need to put it on the agenda, and look at Bear Creek, and look at anything else we could get water from in order to get those big businesses here. It's time that we face it.
Well, I, I, I think we probably have plenty of water if we could get it there. Can the city get water down there?
We'll be happy to put it on future agenda. That's something we're already working on.
Well, I think we should. I really think we should. I think it's a big deal.
Yeah, it is, because you got to have water.
You got to have it.
Can I do a shameless plug on the I-35 corridor? Some land that's going up for sale. There'll be an auction, there's a partition suit going on on the land right across from Love's Country Store on the other side of I-35, on that upper corner, it's about 20 acres.
There's an auction?
There'll be an auction sometime this spring. There's a partition suit going on right now, and that would be an awesome commercial piece of property for some of the residents.
And especially since that truck stop's going on the south side of I-33.
Yeah, yeah.
That's going to help out there. But thank you.
For more information...
I do have...
Was that shameless?
That's why shameless.
That's just good information.
I do have some fast facts here about the county, if anyone would like to have them, because it does get the demographics and it does show the difference, that we were really advised to use those.
That's real.
Thank you very much. Any other questions? Any other questions for Kay? Nope. Same, none. Good deal.
Thank you, Kay.
Can I just quickly interject?
Who's a great reporter.
Our story just ran on Channel 4, and one of the guys that I know that's a triathlete from the city just posted on my page, hey, I saw Trey Hears on TV, he's not busted for something, is he? No, of course, taken back, says, no, he's in custody.
Wonderful, wonderful.
I just wanted to make a comment about Kay's report.
I would love to get back to Kay's report. That's going to be great, yes.
I just want to say I commend Kay for coming here and giving us that quarterly report, which is what we were wanting to have happen, and it looks like you're doing a lot.
And we will continue to put that quarterly.
Thank you.
Sure will. Wonderful, thank you.
Can we not put it on at the same time as Chamber, to save time? Chambers, quarters here.
Yes, sir. We will not put it on the same time. Duly noted, thank you.
Because Wanda goes crazy when there's no other deals are going on.
Discussion regarding agenda items. If you have not taken a good look at that agenda, there is one item that I would like to pull out and that would, to discuss, and then I'll, I'll get to y'all, but I wanted Jim and Aaron to talk about, it would be item number eight, consider approval for sponsorships, donations, so that y'all can better understand that. We wanted to be able to use the TV screen to, to show you what, what that is. So, Mr. Jim?
Mr. Jim, yeah, what I, Mayor Vice, Mayor Counsel, thank you for this opportunity. What I want to talk about is we, we've asked for the opportunity, five minutes, I guess. I got a four-minute program I'd like to show on, so there's five minutes off, talk fast. But Channel, our Channel 20 has been around since 1986, and we've been running on some older equipment, and we'd like to upgrade that equipment, and that cost is expensive to do, and we'd like the opportunity, if you will, to be able to take donations in order to be able to do that. And we currently televise in what's known as standard definition, and we'd like to move to high definition. And so for the purposes of today, I wanted to show you the difference, we all probably know, but I want you to show it on our screen here, and I'll do that in a second, HD versus standard def. And then I'd also like to just take a short opportunity, I guess it's a four-minute, well, if we can cut it down, I can push stop on it, of a production that Aaron had made about the Guthrie Police Department's Lake Patrol Unit that he highlighted, and I, for two purposes, you've probably already seen it, maybe you haven't, if you haven't, you'll enjoy seeing it. From my perspective, it shows the quality of programming that we're doing here today, and I'm really proud of what we've done with the equipment that we have. And if we are able to get donations, we can upgrade that to a higher level if we go from standard definition to, to a high definition. And so our ability to take on some, some donations from the community would help us to do that. So that's what we're asking for. And I am going to make a switch here so we can see these differences. It seemed to work in four. There we go. PC. And this, this is just for the purposes of standard def versus high def. It's the same, the same program, if you will, or the same picture, it's just a stopped scene that Aaron had done for me to, for this demonstration to just show the difference. Obviously, on the left is standard definition, and that's what we're doing right now today as we broadcast Channel 20. And to the right is how we would like it to be in terms of our ability to tape it and record it and send it out, and then ultimately the folks at home could see it in high def.
So high def, you're just a little taller and skinnier?
Yeah.
You lose some weight in high def? Is that what we're looking for?
Okay.
Let's get it, let's get it.
Have a second?
The other, the other thing that...
That was easy.
And this is the video. And this is in high def, because we're coming off of the PC, so...
Hello, and welcome to our version of Chop Cut Rebuild. My name is Anthony Gibbs. I'm the Lake Patrol Officer for the city of Guthrie here in beautiful central Oklahoma. We have a few new tools this year that are going to help us patrol these, our beautiful lakes, Guthrie and Liberty Lake. I'd like to show them to you, so come on.
This is the city of Guthrie's 1997 Chevrolet S10 Blazer. It began life as a fire chief's vehicle and remained in service through 2008. In 2010, the police department drafted a truck for use as a temporary lake patrol vehicle. It quickly became apparent that the truck was uniquely suited to patrol the trail areas due to its smaller size. Problem was some of the terrain was too extreme for the vehicle, especially after rainfall. Modifying the truck would be necessary, but due to a tightened budget, they knew they were going to need some help to make the project work.
Performance auto collision out of Oklahoma City gave us a great deal on changing the exterior of the vehicle from fire engine red to polar white. Unique designs in Guthrie then applied the lettering and departmental logo.
After that, it was time for the lift kit.
Superlift of Monroe, Louisiana, provided us a large discount on a six-inch frame-integrated technology performance series lift kit and steering stabilizer. This is an excellent system because it maintains the correct steering geometry and makes sure no components are at extreme angles and actually strengthens the steering components. Fat Bob's Garage of Ogden, Utah, gave a discount on a body lift kit, which afforded the vehicle an additional two inches of clearance for the larger tires, and just in case, they added a 10,000-pound superwinch and cradle. I can't say enough about Advanced Automotive of Oklahoma City who installed the lift kits. They are one of only a few shops who are willing to take on this project. They did an excellent job making everything work together and gave a huge discount on the labor. Firestone donated four Destination MT radial tires. Compared to what was on the vehicle originally, these tires are massive, measuring 33 inches tall and 12 and a half inches wide. The MT stands for maximum traction, which is helpful when dealing with those loose sand, mud, and rock. To help keep the tires from rubbing on the body, Bodyworks Body Shop of Guthrie trimmed, filled, and undercoated the lower fender wells.
And if that wasn't enough, they also contributed financially to the overall project.
John Vance Motors donated an exterior detail of the truck, including wet sanding, buffing, and waxing, to get it ready for this show. They did a great job of taking out all the scratches from the tree limbs and helping to preserve the paint.
Next, they turned their attention to the ailing interior.
Shawn's Automotive of Guthrie donated the newer power front seats, center console, and roof-mounted console. Form Energy Technology of Guthrie donated the fabrication of a mount for the shotgun rack, which was very helpful. Our own Guthrie Municipal Services Mechanics helped with wiring, parts, and making final adjustments. Due to the fact that the vehicle has to be left unattended at times, Falcon Electronics of Oklahoma City donated and installed an alarm system with door lock actuators. This was greatly necessary to ensure the safety of all the interior components. Lastly, H&amp;H Marine of Oklahoma City donated the use of a 2012 Yamaha VX Cruiser Wave Runner for the summer season. It is one of the most effective tools we have, because we can reach any area of the lakes quickly, which helps us keep everyone safer. Now let's see the Lake Patrol truck in action. Well, that's it for our show. I wanted to convey a very special thanks to everybody who helped make this happen, but I've got to go clean this up. I hope to see you at the lake. Thanks for watching.
Pretty neat piece. I mean, it really says a lot. It says a lot about the police department, their ability to go out and get donations as well, which wasn't part of my plug at all to get, you know, in terms of what I'm trying to do, but, you know, talk about a collaboration of, you know, people within the town of Guthrie as well as in the state of Oklahoma to help out the police department. And, you know, what I'm trying to highlight is what Aaron did in terms of putting together this piece and putting it on Channel 20 and showing us off. Now, a lot of his productions also, or our productions, go on to Channel, excuse me, go on to, on the internet, on the internet as well, and you can see a lot of those too. But that's a high-quality production using digital equipment and high-definition. So we have one HD camera today, and in fact, Aaron himself personally donated that, and that's what we're using to shoot our HD stuff today. So what we would like to do is have that opportunity to try and get donations from the community, from anybody who would like to donate to us, and to be able to receive them, and the resolution will do that for us, and then we have in here, and I won't bore you with it, because I know my time is way, way down, but the opportunity to buy the equipment, and what we'd like to do is take everything HD. And let me just take one step backwards and say something that Matt had always said to me, and that, you know, our Channel 20, first and number one is our transparency of our government, and that's, it will always be our focus. I mean, we do these other things, but number one is to broadcast our meetings, our council meetings, and pretty much for the most part, we broadcast all of the, you know, the different commissions that we have, and we'll continue to do that. But we'd sure like the equipment to bring that up to high definition, so I'm open to any questions you might have, recognizing everyone will be on my time.
New senior pack at the sponsorship levels, that we are working in coordination with the Chamber of Commerce. They plan to, and if Mary was here, but I'll try to speak for them, is that they also have a sponsorship level, and we're marrying it with our level. So let's say that you're a Chamber member and you want to donate to the Chamber $5,000. With that $5,000, you can combine a package and get some GTV airtime, and we would receive some of that funding, and then they would receive some. So it's kind of this combined package, so we're just showing you our deals, and then they will help us market it. We're not sending Aaron out door-knocking and spending his time doing that. We're using his time to do what he does best with his production.
Right, and certainly we'll do a piece on this and, you know, put it on our TV so that we can, you know, but we'll also be collaborating with the, with the Chamber to be able to, because they have the businesses that we'd like to, you know, have the sponsorships and the donations from.
I have a question. So how is this different than buying advertisements?
Well, that's a good one. And from a legal perspective, I guess we always, we always refer anything to Randall, but we're not, we're not advertising, we're not advertising, we're doing sponsorships. So we're going to, we will highlight a business based on the sponsorship, but we won't go to John Vance and feature their cars, for instance, or, you know, just like this ad, we've, I guess we featured these companies, you know, on the police car deal, Lake Ranger vehicle, but we didn't get into if you want to buy these shocks, they're 1995 down at. You know, we're not going to be doing any advertising. It's more promotion.
So it's kind of promotion of city things through, you know, or... So it's kind of promotion of city things through, you know, or having these businesses help showcase the city, right? That type of stuff, right?
Well, it'll be having the businesses help, they'll be showcasing themselves through a donation to us, so...
And you can see on the sponsorship levels, for example, if someone would like to be a partner of the city, their gift would be $500. They'd get a 15-second promotion spot to play two times per down GTV 20 for a one-year period. They would also get a three-month commitment sponsor of a special production, and so the example for, would be like the production that Aaron did on the triathlon. So it'd be sponsored by that organization. So coming to you is the triathlon from Bill and the Blount Company. Something like that.
Yeah, if you guys haven't seen the triathlon video, I don't know, it's really good. You should check it out. I mean, it's, it's cool.
It's championship. I mean, it's, it's professional.
Yeah, it really is.
It's really good.
No further questions, I believe? I'd be happy to entertain any items regarding the agenda items for this evening. Anything in particular you'd like us to discuss?
We do have a council photo, so don't forget that.
We do, in just a moment, we have mustaches that we can hold up, and we just want to get a picture with council with a mustache. Trey, if you'd like to demonstrate, you have a mustache in front of you.
I have my mustache.
There it is. But we have them on little sticks.
Turn to the camp.
It's for the promotion...
I got my Facebook page.
The promotion of Mumford and Sons, which, as you will quickly learn, mustaches is kind of their thing. So if you see mustaches in random places across the city...
I've seen them all evening.
Yes, so, and our staff is...
Cody's the only girl I've seen partial of, I'm Cody.
The city staff has gotten in the spirit and has attempted to throw mustaches.
It's not funny, isn't it, Cody?
I'm surprised the HR is low.
He's in it with you.
Listen, file your agreements on your own time.
Since I've lost complete control of this meeting, if there's no further items for this evening, I move on to number five for a request of future items of discussion.
Do you want to talk about the water situation next time?
We're waiting on some items. We have received a proposal in an effort to look at production of more water. For us to enter that agreement will be costly to even start that, so we can get some numbers and bring it to you. We'd be happy to. Sure. We can do it on the next meeting with Bill. And we evaluate that on a regular basis, so...
Well, just come look at the lakes and you'll evaluate it quick.
Mm-hmm, thank you. Say none.
We're out of here.
I adjourn, thank you.